All right, I call this meeting of the Coquille City Council order. Please rise and join me in the ready for agents.
I am President of the United States of America and to be repudified for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Happy August, everybody. Good weather has reduced our numbers of attendance, possibly. There's a lot of interesting things happening around the community. Last week I was at the fair. I know Fran was there every day I think of the fair.
Every day.
I know I saw Linda there, but a lot of people were at the fair. I saw Council President Wees there and Councilor Graham. Everybody there was probably there in some capacity. Councilor Chappell told me he ate the chicken dinner and supported the Bobcats. You know, boo hoo.
I do support her a devil's too.
That is true. That is true. And actually, that chicken's so good it's worth supporting Bobcats. I was gonna say, though, lots of interesting things going on. We've got the Fireman's Barbecue and Steak Feed this weekend, which is a marquee event. If you've never been before, it is worth every penny. You get a good chunk of meat. It's the best oil pitch you'll ever have. I mean, your arteries will clog. Even if you're like Jack Lalanne, the most healthy man on the planet, you'll feel it clog when you're doing it, but it's a good feeling. And lots of class reunions. And the Sodas Theater will be hopping that night. They're probably, I don't know if they're sold out yet or not.
We still have tickets.
So, you know, talk to Kathy over there. She's the ticket lady. It's a great event. You get to see a lot of people you haven't seen before or haven't seen for a long time. As far as appointments, we still have some vacancies on committees. We still have a vacancy on the library board. And we've had a vacancy for the last couple of months on the Budget Committee. And so I've only received one person expressing interest, and that is Amanda Rudd. She's a substitute teacher at the Coquille School District, the Marshfield School District, and the North Bend School District. And if there are no objections, I'd like to appoint her at this time. The Budget Committee, forgive me. And that's for the term that expires January 1st, 2019. All right, we still need people for the Library Board. It's our most active committee, actually. They meet once a month and they actually do meet and have an agenda and do all that stuff.
And it's during the day. Everybody here, it's easy.
Yeah, that's it, especially if somebody keeps daytime hours and is retired or something like that. That said, Chairwoman Jennings told me that if it's a person who works a day job who's interested, she's glad to move the meetings back to where they were in the evening to accommodate that, too, just to try and make it as inclusive as possible. All right, let's move on to Council comments. I'll start with Councilor Graham.
I'd like to express my thanks to the Public Works Department for their rapid response team to ground the dogs again after dark.
I will pass that on. I wasn't even aware of it.
It's done.
I'll let them know.
All right.
They don't stop to call me on everything.
I think the contract.
Oh, did they?
West Coast Defense.
Defense.
One thing I better do for the minutes sent through from the listeners then, since there were no objections from the council, I appoint Amanda Rudd to the Budget Committee for the term ending January 1st, 2019. All right, thank you for that indulgence. Councilor Eadie?
I would like to reiterate what Dennis said about the fast work on the dog park. They put up a net so the dogs couldn't get out at first, and then Fitz came and we're back to business. I had, we had the Garden Club Garden Tour this past month, and it was a big success. We were struggling for a while, didn't think anybody would come, but it met all the expectations of the last few garden tours. And I hope it can do the same thing next year.
All right, Council President Wees.
One of the Coos County's favorite sons, Clow Laird, has passed away. And I just want you to know that August 4th, out at the Oaks Pavilion in Murfreesboro, they're going to have a ceremony for him. So if you knew Clow, it should be interesting to see him. Great guy, great guy. I just want to put that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Councilor Chappell?
I don't have anything to say.
Geez, you're on a roll. Now we know who to get the line to in the next pool game.
There you go.
All right, Councilor Short?
Well, as far as the fair is concerned, I was there and I was delighted to see one of my very good friends, I think you can well send me the grand marshals. And it was delightful because they did do a lot and they're hard workers and they were very excited on it and I was very pleased to see it. So that was great. A week ago today, or yes, tomorrow, I was in Sedona, Arizona, and I'm taking my family on a balloon ride. So that was very fun. I loved the fun. I have a lot of beautiful pictures and things. And we landed successfully and there were no lines, no...
You didn't do any balloons, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I don't think there's any wires around Sedona anyway. They're all on the ground, but it was beautiful. I also went to Suzanne Swans, what's it called, Vitham on the River or Rhymes on the River, for a few minutes, and it was very well organized. There wasn't too many people there, but she did a nice job and she handed out information about it. And I was very impressed and she, you know, very thanked me for being there. And I have to say, I didn't stay long, but it was well done. December, after we got the Garden Tour, so in December we're gonna have the Victorian Tea for Christmas ones to help out the carousel. We got one last year and it's very successful. We're having another one on the 3rd, so I hope everybody can come. Some people think that men can't come, but men do come and they have a good time also. So I'm hoping everybody will come to that. Otherwise, I think I have Tuesday, I have an LSAS too, so perhaps a week now I thought I was on vacation. But anyway, I'm well medicated and I'm fine.
So that's the excuse.
Councilor Gaypart?
Okay, the fair is over and many long hours, but it was really loser this year. Kate Blanco really takes away from the fair. And thank goodness next year they'll be down in Meds. Well, it doesn't affect the other part of the fair, which Amy knows, the 4-H FFA did fantastic. I know Bob and Maine and I continue to support them and every year we buy animals. But it was really good and Amy's fed 33...
$33,000, a little bit over that was raised at the auction on Saturday.
Wow.
Way more than they did last year. 126 kids, I think.
And so this is, I know the young man who's hard we buy is going to be an extension agent. I said, oh, we have an opening. He said, yeah, let's go first. It's just such a good program and people who don't take advantage of that, it helps them, it's a tax write-off, anything over Martha Price is a write-off for you. It's really great. You get to see people at the fair and of course, another section I do is that apple pie. Great. We got Scott in at this time, so he's been initiated. It's really a fun thing. This year Suzie Cook won and she's worked in that fair office for years and years and years and entered a pie every year and never won, and this year she won. So it's really great. Now, tomorrow night, we have National Night Out, and so Scott probably is gonna know something about it. But I think I've got like 14 different groups with games for the kids, plus we have the miniature pony that was out at the fair. They bring their ponies every year, so there's gonna be one of them tomorrow night at the Community Center. And that'll be nice for the little kids, 'cause it's only about that big, so that will be fun. And yes, it's safety's coming, so I hope we get some relaxed attention. Last week of this month, I don't want any meetings. I'm gonna go see my sister.
All right. There are lots of things at the fair, you know, now that I see Mr. Major here, of course, they, Coos County'd like to get this great little setup there. Were you, did you go to the fair?
Split family. My wife and the children went to the fair and did the horse activities and I won't take a lot of them.
Well, it's, oh, I was gonna say. So you're a part of the reason the gate was down, it's all your fault.
I heard the rodeo was great Friday night, though.
Well, the other side I was gonna say, though, is that actually only linemen were allowed to actually use this great display where you showed the little rubber men getting electric here to burn. And of course, I saw my old Boy Scout mate and anything else, your distinguished son-in-law, Andrew Kareva there, working in there, great Coquille Zone, now of Gaver Day thing. But father, your grandson, grandson, granddaughter, I can't remember. Doesn't he have, doesn't he, you and your daughter have, he and your daughter have a grandson?
Ransom.
That's right. That's great. I hadn't seen him for a long time and he grew a lot. But, all right, all right, let's go to staff reports. Let's start with Chief Sanders. Now, if you didn't have anything to say for National Night Out, Fran made sure you better have something to say for National Night Out.
We do. It's a lot night, five to seven. We have a lot planned, so anyone who wants to bring their children, I'll be good.
All right. All right, Library Director's report. Library Director Connor?
Thank you very much. I would like to add one thing to my written report. Tomorrow is the last day of our summer reading program, which has been very successful. But we have one more program after summer reading program ends, and that's next Tuesday at 6:00, a family event. A world-renowned juggler, comedian, balancer, professional, real professional, he does knives, will be performing in a small auditorium, 6:00 on Tuesday, and it's free. So bring your family, it'll be entertaining, you'll enjoy it.
Does he throw a knife?
Pardon me?
Is he a knife thrower, or is that what you ask?
No, he juggles.
He is jugglers.
He names his trigger finger.
I was gonna say, if he threw knives, you could stand in front of Mr. Mayor and throw knives. Don't give people any ideas.
He's a juggler and balancer and all those things, you know.
You said you had a question for Andy there, Councilor Eadie?
Right. On the item eight, the circulation for July was 4,545, and the year-to-date is 4,545.
You start July first?
It's the first month.
This is the first month of the year?
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah, that can be confusing.
All right. Any other questions for Director Connor? Here, nothing? All right, we'll move to the Fire Chiefs' report. Of course, I put in my plug for your event. I will continue to do so for the rest of the week. And I'm not asking for a discount at all, it's just great to be at a lovely event. What does the money for that event go to? I know what the members of the council know, but if anybody doesn't know, what's it go to?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. Actually, it's a firefighter association event, so all the money raised goes back to their account. They're actually a nonprofit organization. They actually just support youth sports teams. Sometimes they'll do the 4-H Kids, rodeo queens. They just give all the money back to the community, one way or the other. So we just thank you for your support this Saturday, and you'll actually see it within the community.
How many states have you bought for this thing, any estimate?
I think there's about 1,500 New York grade A's cut up.
And you sold out last year?
We did, yeah. We were very, very close to doing that. So, yeah, it's gonna be a great day. About eight to 10 class reunions coming, about 150 cars in the car show. So, yeah, it's just gonna be a great day.
Any questions for Fire Chief Hunter's report? All right, very good. All right, on to Public Works Director Urban, Mr. Urban.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I don't have anything to add to my report. You can probably cross off number one, as you both know, it's already done. Underashed. Speed kills.
Reminds me of, well, all right. Now, thank you very much, Kevin. Any questions for the Public Works Director? All right. Then we'll move on to, because our Finance Director is not here. If there's questions regarding the Finance Report, I know City Manager Marchand will do his best. Any questions regarding the Finance Director's report?
I'll just state for the record that our current bond yield is 2.27% and the duration is 2.91 years.
All right, very good. Almost sounds like Chuck. You never picked up smoking, have you? But, all right, thanks, Ben. We'll move to the City Managers' report. Anything in addition to your written report there, Ben, or anything you'd like to emphasize?
Nothing really to add, but there was one question about the Blue Zones project, which is a project that many different jurisdictions and organizations, businesses are all kind of vanning together to support. Blue Zones are areas of the world where they have found people to have unusually high life expectancy due to an extraordinary health and wellness regimen. This project is designed to make it a focus to create a blue zone here by increasing the health and wellness of all of the residents. And the idea is that if every city, business, hospital, school, and organization combines their efforts to adopt policies and promote programs and access to healthy food and recreation, that we can actually change the health of the county and have a better, more prosperous future for it. And so there is a pledge that they are asking the various organizations to make, that they will pursue supporting this program with policies and budget investments and things that will help to make it a healthier community. And I wanted to know if the City Council is interested in participating officially. The pledges are due this month. They'll be putting in a grant, for a Blue Zone grant, on August 26th.
All right, thank you, Ben. Any questions on the City Managers' report?
Yeah, I have a couple.
All right, let me go for it.
On the item three in the bottom, it says that Cindy Dastin, did we take in 92,000 this year on our Dastin?
That is what we have budgeted, yes.
So that kind of means, I mean, did everybody, I says to me, you know, you have these three stands, how much are you making on it?
That's how much.
So that's actually 92,000 this year?
Yes.
Okay. And so this year we have a budget of 455,000 for the street fund also, is that right? A part of that, the timber fund?
Yes. The timber fund put into that considerably.
Okay. And the other thing I had on the turn of the docks, docks on the fish clean, I was wondering, because I know that Fort Abbot is helping with that, when did they, when did they say they would help? I mean, how long ago? It seems to me it's been a long time since they have agreed to do that.
It was May 2014.
Okay, so it's just taking off.
When they took the vote.
Okay, so it's just all this time that we just kind of like haven't been able to do it because of all these other reasons, is that it?
I, they didn't fully fund the project, so I had to go and find matching funds. So I had to get a grant and secure a grant with Fish and Wildlife, and that just happened end of last year.
Okay, thank you. And as far as our reading is concerned, Jim, was that the one that the Rotary Health Paper?
Yes.
Excuse me?
That Raven, I mean, I'm sorry, that gazebo.
Raven.
Is that the one that they could add?
Yes.
Okay, and how long ago did they finally decide, I mean, when did they, when did they okay that?
That was last year, summer of last year.
Okay. I guess I'm just thinking, you know, we're kind of talking about things not getting done, you know, and I looked at that and I thought, okay, now we've been talking about the gazebo and I know somebody else that, you know, that Rotary gave them money and now it's saying that it's gonna be ordered in 10 weeks, it will come. You know, it just seems like that's a long time since if the money was given last summer.
I didn't think that they were gonna be able to get it to us.
Well, there were a couple of things about that, because when we originally proposed doing this, we were applying for an Oregon State Parks Grant in March of last year.
Okay.
And if you'll recall, the discussion about how much the urban renewal is going to put in to put in for match on that grant, well, we didn't end up getting that grant. And when we didn't have a grant to do that project, you know, we had to change our strategy. And we've been doing it piecemeal and just, it's on the list. We reviewed it with the Urban Renewal Agency back in January or February of this year, and it was, it wasn't stated as a high priority, but it was just on the list and we'll knock them off one at a time. And that's why it's taken us until this point to get it on the list. We're ready to go, we've ordered it. And this will just put in the gazebo. It does not include the footpaths or the lighting or any of the other things we talked about.
Right, it's just a gazebo, okay. And on the gateway entrance, you know, I know we talked about this, how many years we put that $100,000 aside for the entrance, you know, and then, because according to this, it's like we haven't made it a priority, so therefore that's why nothing's been done? You know, I'm just kind of wondering, I guess I'm kind of picking on the fact that I'm feeling like nothing's getting done and stuff, and so I'm just wondering, is this something that we need to start picking up on or have we decided kind of? You know, I know that the flowers around the clock are beautiful, but that wasn't, that wasn't what the issue was. The issue was where the, where the cars are and the encroachment. And then I realized that ODOT owns part of that corner. I know that and all that kind of thing. You know, we talked about doing some different things, and I know I see the statue or whatever was brought up in here, but I'm wondering, is this something that we're gonna pursue or is it? Because I say, some of these things, they, that the council wishes to make it a priority, so since we haven't made anything a priority, it just seems like we haven't been going forward. And this is one of the things that we've had $100,000 in for several years now. So is this something that we're not doing ourselves and the council, that we're not going forward on this?
I think it's a little more nuanced than that, because when you talk specifically about that corner, you know, I began the conversation trying to do it as an economic development project soft glove offering, trying to find some way to facilitate the relocation of that business to another location where they can be more successful and less in the way and not encroaching. They're not in compliance with the city's land use and zoning at that location. They are encroaching on the right-of-way, but the state doesn't seem particularly interested in enforcing their right-of-way. And so that's been the sticking point. What do we do? What is the design? Is this something that is a priority, that we should just go ahead and build a three-foot masonry retaining wall right on the, on the right-of-way line, at least around the radius of the corner where we want to do the improvement? I wouldn't say we're gonna cut off their access to the parking lot or go to the building, but at least right there, where we would prevent the vehicles from coming up on the grass, so that we could have a nice great gateway entry. And so we were looking at every other possible variable and strategy to improve that corner short of doing something that would be detrimental to the business.
And I know one time I was seeing a picture somewhere, I have them, I keep everything, is that like there was a wall, you know, with some benches in front and maybe some trees that were kind of, you know, obscure?
Yeah.
And yet still have the grass in front, because that's ODOT's.
Yeah, so we've shared some ideas with the council, but there, we haven't received any direction like, yes, we wanna do this, we wanna do that now, but we vote, that kind of a thing. So we've been putting our efforts into other areas and other projects, and we've got a lot of other things done in the meantime.
Right, okay. I was just kind of curious, because I know we're talking about this for so long.
We're also gonna add, you know, that's okay, because our right-of-way doesn't start until the end of those curves into Adams. So even where the clock tower's located, where the cars are encroaching, all that's ODOT's. We have to talk to them before we put anything out there.
Well, I understand that, but we haven't done that, though.
No.
I know, I know there's a, there's a process of doing it, but we just kind of seem like we haven't gone forward on our process. We have the money to start it anyway, but we just kind of, you know, we've talked about it, but it just hasn't gone forward, okay. As far as the pool is concerned, you know, this, I'd be defensive on this, okay? I read the sentence about raise, to build our relatively inactive sense of pool, the pool committee has raised the funds, okay. As far as the second pool and the other pool is concerned, is that after we finished the first pool, you know, the second pool that one, we had a meeting, because people said, okay, how are we gonna get the next pool going? You know, how can we do the? And so, as you know, I was president of the pool committee and Judy was the main fundraiser. And when we finished the pool, we had a meeting, because everybody was interested, and they came, quite a few people, that were new people, that swam. And they were very interested, and we said, you know, we build the pool, you know, and we are the older generation and we will be happy to, you know, pass it on to you. And so I gave all, you know, everything, but as far as the grants are concerned, to a couple of other people that were very interested in it, and they were, they had a few meetings. So I think that, I don't know what happened, and I think maybe Judy, because I know that the pool's doing great, I don't mean that, I mean, doing wonderful things. But I mean, as far as going forward is concerned, I think it's, we kind of passed it to the next group of people younger than us that, you know, want to carry on the pool, is that part of it. Let me think here, I have all these things, I'm just gonna...
So you're saying that's going to continue to be a project of the pool committee, not a task that staff is expected to be moving forward?
Staff didn't do the first pool, I don't mean, I mean, you know, I mean, we had a...
Right.
Well, wait a minute, though. I mean, our meetings, we had grant writers, we had a committee, not that you didn't help, but we had Operation Coquille, you know, they were doing our, you know, our things. And we had, of course, you remember, we do put in money, you know, everybody put in money. But I mean, as far as really kind of getting it forward is concerned, it was the pool committee.
Yeah.
And so I kind of feel the same way. Not that the city's not gonna help, but I think there's, you know, gotta be a younger group that wants to continue this, and maybe you have them there. You know, I was just gonna figure this. Okay, so the birch, I know I'm on a roll, this must be, that's not the drug, I'm thinking about this. One of the things is the birch tree, which you brought up, okay? Because that was another thing we talked about for several years, is how much is gonna open it up, it's gonna be safer, we're gonna get the mailbox across the street, you know? What takes, what happens, what do we have to do to get that to go forward? And this is on your thing, maybe I should be looking to you. But see what I mean, this is one of the things that I guess...
Just say, just as a council, say the word.
Well, if I recall, the birch tree project was ten of, was, you know, commiserate on getting the Small Cities Grant, but the problem is that we had this situation, the Small Cities Grant went to that. And so that's part of what delayed it, right, Kevin?
Yeah, we don't, we don't automatically get a Small Cities Grant.
No.
I mean, they're, they're competitive grant. I did apply for it there once and did not get it. Then the next year, the slide came up, went for that, did get it. So when we go back and try it again, probably, it was, it was kind of far down on the URA list of projects that we want to do. So we had several other things that were in front of it, if you recall, and we haven't gotten those completed yet. So, and, you know, I know sometimes it seems like things aren't moving forward very fast, but there's a lot more projects out there, I think, that, that may go kind of unnoticed. I mean, like the fish intake screens and, and I and I work, that we're working on trying to get manholes re-lined, and I mean, there's, there's quite a few products, you know, in the pipeline, and, you know, sometimes you just have to keep kicking the can down the road, but they have closed the fish station and they're gonna be working on it tomorrow, and they need to take the roof off of it, and they're gonna fix up, you know, what's remaining there. Things have been ordered, they're, they're coming in. Fortunately, we have a guy here who knows solar, he's gonna be able to handle all that, so that's coming. When the gazebo arrives, we're gonna have somebody put that up. I mean, they're, they're coming. It's just, you know, and I know, so is Christmas, but sometimes the wheels just turn kind of slow.
Okay, maybe, maybe I'm not, maybe I'm the only one who feels that way, but I kind of, sometimes I wish I always kept a hold of that. You know, one of the reasons we're not gonna be able to do this is because of the man, with the manhole. And so because we haven't been able to do this, you know, we're not forgetting the fact that we wanna do this, but here's the reason we haven't been able to.
Well, this is what I interviewed at the last meeting, is that I think every meeting we should have an update, okay? Here's the projects we're working on, here's where we are, here's why we're not going forward because of this, whatever this is. But we wait six months to a year till we get this report, and then we wonder what happened, you know? So, you know, I think maybe we need to be more progressive in terms of what we demand for information, or not demand, but I mean, ask for it.
And also, that thing is, is that community building? You know, I mean, I know one of the big things is the boiler, you know, and the heat and the pool has been a really big issue. I'm kind of wondering, we have a fund set aside for, like it says here, eventually we're gonna need to be replaced. Do we have a fund set aside so when the contract comes that we're gonna have some money for that?
There's improvement fund in the budget for the community building.
Yes, there is. And, and a lot of the improvements to the community building come from the Reitman Trust.
I know, yeah.
But ever since interest rates have been at zero, it hasn't generated any.
Right.
So we're not able to do very much without very much money to do it with.
Have you prioritized what needs to be done there? I mean, boiler probably is one of the top ones.
Well, the boiler's in working order, we aren't having any problems with it. We had that glitch at the beginning of the pool season, which may put a big spotlight on it. But it's been working, the pool's been heated all summer since that point, and there aren't any issues. We replaced three of the five sections last summer. And so, you know, the, the, the big question is, do you invest in repairs to keep it going a little longer and spare yourself the big expense? Or when do you actually have to cuff up big money to replace the entire heating system entirely? It's a huge facility with, you know, I don't know how many cubic feet of space, cubic yards of space, but an eleven thousand square foot auditorium, a three thousand square foot library, and a three thousand square foot small auditorium and hallway. That's just an enormous amount of space that that boiler works on. And so to replace it is a capital project beyond our means unless we are, were to make it a double priority and fund it out of, a portion out of URA, a portion out of property management, timber sale, that kind of a thing.
The main problem you've got with that heating system is one thing, it's antiquated, the.
We don't have climate zones, we don't have.
No climate zones, which are the building, they're coking to death and part of freezing. I think that at some point, we have to look at a cost benefit for efficiency. They've got more efficient heating systems now than when that thing was built, I think it came over in Bel Air. And I think it needs to be looked at as far as what can we save by having a new updated system with climate zones? And if you separate that pool from the main building, it isn't going to take that much. You're losing very a lot to the people on the community building, the pool.
Especially if they have another pool too.
But, but we're not, the problem is, is the, what we're losing is marginal to the cost of replacing or adding a new system. It's cheaper to lose what we're losing now than it is to replace the boiler and put in a new heater for the pool.
Do we ever set any money aside for that? So like you were saying, is maybe capital, either that's something.
No, because the, the pool hasn't yet operated in the black, and we don't allocate any extra funds to the pool for capital improvements in the future. Same thing with the community center, except for what the Reitman endowment provides. And I think we do actually budget some separate for the community center for maintenance and improvements, but it's not enough to replace the boiler and the entire heating system.
Do you see the pool going into the block sometime? Ever?
This is the summer to find out how close we can get, but I'll say no. I, I, I don't think in five or 10 years you're going to get there. I think with everything we've done in terms of selling the signs and advertising and giving community support and having movie nights, and we have increased the real attendance and patronage of the pool by a lot. I, I don't have the numbers, I, I can't wait to see them, but I wouldn't be surprised if we're looking at thirty percent increases over the last season, which was a huge banner season. And nevertheless, when you have increased activity, you have increased costs, we're selling a lot more concessions, but then we're also buying them. And when you get down to it, I'm hoping to close the fifty thousand dollar deficit down to a twenty-five thousand dollar deficit, which would be huge, but it's not, it's not in the black, because it's still twenty-five thousand dollars we're having to subsidize the pool.
Don't you think that's something that we will always have?
Yeah, I mean, really, this is a quality of life investment that communities very rarely make. The question is, is if we have a twenty-five thousand dollar in savings, rather than pocket the savings, do we put that savings into a fund for a future heater for the pool?
Well, I still think the solar is something that needs, you need to keep on top of that. Northwest Natural, Pacific Power, give incentive for that.
Yes, and we've, we've talked to Oregon Energy Trust, and they've come out and looked at those options. And, you know, their, their recommendation right now is to put a heat-on-demand module inside the pool house as the most efficient savings we can make and invest in ahead of solar, ahead of anything else. So that's their recommendation, and there are energy credits that we could use to offset that investment, but there's still a sizable investment to be made.
One more, I'll keep talking.
Please don't.
I do have other things, but I'm going to be quiet. South First Avenue, water line replacement and road overlay.
It's under design.
Okay, my, as Kevin knows, I've been talking to him for a while, and he just gets, he tells me to go to Linda Kennedy, and I talked to Linda Kennedy, it's because, you know, about a year or so ago, a paper was sent out saying to the, to the people, because I happen to live on that street, but would they be interested in natural gas at the time? Well, I felt it was really a, I don't understand it now, but it didn't explain the fact you don't have to, it didn't explain the fact we're just kind of curious to know, you know, this is what it cost if you wanted it, this wouldn't be, you know. So everybody I know said, I don't think, I don't want to be forced to do it. And so they said, a lot of people I've talked to said, I said, no. But I kind of felt like we needed to explain, if that opportunity came up, here's what it would cost you. Here's, you know, because you always hear you have to, you know, have two appliances, you have to do this and that. And like Kevin said, we're not opening up that hole in your street for, for something else. You know, once it's open, if you want to have natural gas, then, then that's the time to do it. So my question is, is this the type of thing that you're talking about? And is this something that needs to be addressed before you go ahead with it?
Actually, we were looking at replacing sewer line and the water line, and then after replacing the main lines and the service laterals and water connections, then there should be a street overlay. The city, this, this spring, TV'd the sewer lines and found that it doesn't need replaced.
Right, that's what I understood.
So now we're finishing up design on the water line and then the overlay. We have not made any plans for the gas company.
If, if you're going to be doing the, the part of it, would that be a time you could do the natural gas if, if, while you're having, doing that?
Sure, we, we could certainly contact them and, and see if they'd be interested. We hate to, they like to share a trench space, but we hate to do that, because it creates potential problems in the future for the city if they have to dig up their water line, you got a gas line there now, and, so then you also, it requires a wider trench, and you have to bench it. And so we like to see them go in by themselves.
Would you be able to put it in another trench there?
Yeah, we even told them we would trench it for them. We said we'd trench it for them, and they still didn't come back and say, okay, we'll do it.
So while he's doing what he's talking about, and you, that if they said they would, yes to you, that you would trench it also?
Yeah, we would just, we would just put it in the plant as an additional trench to be dug.
Specifically for them.
Yeah, specifically for them, but, but again, they, they were not receptive to that. I mean, they said, I said, okay, we'll make you a trench, and that really earned much back from them.
Do I have permission to contact Linda Kennedy?
You can contact her on the.
I mean, I'm not going to do any good, but I, I feel like the, the street needs to stand their options.
I think, I, I think if somebody actually went and talked to them instead of just giving them like a weak lip, they might.
That's why I thought we should have a meeting.
Better.
Have a street meeting, I mentioned this last year, and for natural gas or for you, and come out and say, here's what's going on, here's what needs to be done, so that the people in, because there's a lot of houses on that street.
Yeah.
And I don't know how many would be interested, but they need to understand what it would cost and what they would need to do. And they don't, and they don't. So that's why I've always kind of felt like this should be a meeting.
Don't you have a public works committee?
Yes.
There's your avenue right there.
I, I've asked before.
But if you're, I, I don't think you're going to get people from the street to come to a meeting.
By the way.
Why don't you set, why don't you set up a public works committee meeting, invite Linda Kennedy and the people that would actually be responsible for doing the trenching from, from the gas company, and have them come there and set up, and say, hey, this is what we want.
That's what I'm, yeah, but, but then, I mean, that's under control. I mean, we can dig the trench, and they can put in the natural gas line. It's not, it's not a problem with the city or public works or the engineer or anyone. It's if Northwest Natural has enough.
Get them to a meeting.
Then get, then get them to a meeting to come to here and talk to you and talk to your committee. So you know who all's on the same page.
But, but you're talking about a, a sales problem. Northwest Natural needs to sell it to the residents, not the city.
Then that's their job.
Exactly.
That's their job. It's just like what they did up where I live. I mean, it was, it was three years before they put that, they stopped a block away from our house, okay? And then, I mean, it was just a matter of just calling them and calling them and calling them, and Linda said, if you can get three people on your block to hook up with gas, with gas products, we'll put your line in. Hey, boom, by the end of the day, we got three people, and they were tunneling in the gas line. There you go. Set up a meeting, set up a meeting with Linda, with your committee meeting.
Well, with us setting up a meeting with Nor, Nor, I, I, not to argue with you, but, you know, how, how, how do you, how do you assure that the residents are going to be there?
I'm, I'm not, that's, that's not our problem, that's their problem. If they want to sell their product, they'll do it.
So, so there isn't a purpose for the public works committee to sit down with?
I guess what I'm saying is for you to all be on the same page, so everybody knows what everybody's.
We, we could have a meeting, and if, you know, I would, I would put notices on every door on that street, residents.
Fantastic.
Say, we're, okay, we're going to have a meeting, we're going to have Northwest Natural Gas Center. If they don't show up, you've done your due diligence and you're done, that's all you can ask.
Now, see, what, we had the, what do you call that, the street, you know, we get together and, and everybody goes, thank you, you know. And we, I have one, and we have one in town, ahead of my neighbors, so we could get to know the neighbors. And we probably had maybe twenty-five people. And what I did, which I heard was illegal, but I, whatever, I had a letter inviting them and telling them why, you know, get to know each other and all that kind of stuff. And I went, as soon as I saw the mail, and I go around, I went and put it in the mailbox, this is behind you. So then I knew that when they picked up their mail, each one would get it and stuff. And we had a, you know, we had a pretty good turnout.
Isn't that illegal?
I put something in there.
That's what I heard.
I heard.
I'm going to attach it to the box.
Okay, inbox.
Well, pardon?
Don't anybody say anything, it stays in this.
But anyway, I mean, I would, you know, happy to.
I assume Linda works for the gas company.
Linda Kennedy.
Linda, Linda Kennedy.
Yeah, she's the, she's the big mucky-muck around here.
Is she the customer service person?
I think so.
Yeah, she's in charge of that.
And I talked to her a lot before, but.
And like I say, we can, we can notify the residents, we can have a meeting, and if they show up, great, if not, nothing we can do.
No, but I would, I would really myself kind of like to go around and encourage them to come. We, because they have nothing to lose.
There you go.
Everything again.
And everything again, okay, thank you. That's it.
You go.
Well, yeah, that's why I am.
And Dennis Grant has, Dennis Grant has one question in forty-seven parts.
I feel that.
I forgot what it was.
All right, well, anything else for Ben on his city managers or board? See, if anybody wants to know, if the members of the council read the packet, the proof is in the pudding right there, you know? So, all right, we'll move on to public participation, did anybody sign up?
There's no shade.
Okay, does anybody want to, I see Kathy, anybody else? All right, Kathy, come on down.
Okay.
Let's try and keep it to three minutes if we can.
I, it's real short, I promise.
Okay, well, well, I remember sitting to the, the microphone and all that stuff for the record, because she's got to rely on the tape to try and transcribe all that.
Kathy Simonetti.
And Melissa's new, so she needs your answers too.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kathy Simonetti, um, sorry, I've forgotten what you guys to use.
Any of his line.
Okay, let's see, one nineteen, Birch Street, Kokil, representing Chamber of Commerce, Kokil Chamber of Commerce. And it's Kathy Simonetti, S-I-M-O-N-E-T-T-I. So I just had a little report, a little follow-up on what everybody else has kind of said. At the Coos County Fair, nobody mentioned the parade on Saturday. And I'm proud to report that the Dog Park, hello, one fourth place.
Oh, I thought it was second.
Uh, no, we got fourth, Sawdusters got second.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and on National Night Out, just to let you guys know that we are having a canine exhibition. Did you know that? Yes. And just checking, I mean, I'm kind of excited about that, because everybody wants to see the dogs. I guess the sheriffs are coming with one of their dogs. And we have a mounted sheriff this year on the horses, they're coming.
They've talked about, talking to the posse to see if they're coming.
Yes, the posse's coming. And their water boat.
Boat's coming, yes.
The boats are coming. And we have a bouncy tent in the community center, popcorn, cotton candy, and Bigfoot's going to be there from the Sawdusters. They're going to have, Bigfoot will be out there, but lots of things to go. So kind of just let's spread the word, we know it's really late notice, I've been publicizing it everywhere I can think of, but we, we're, I think we're going to have a pretty cool house. The second, the third thing, I think, let's see, the Dog Park. Oh, nobody mentioned Kokil Day at the county fair. We had Kokil Day, it was so nice to see them, everybody from the city showed up. No, just being, just, don't, don't print that, don't look at it. Edit that. Fran was there, of course, she had the deep job of putting all the tables in the tents, and I wanted to say thank you very much for doing all that work. I know it takes up a lot of time and a lot of effort, and I really do appreciate it. The Carousel was there, the Riverwalk was there, we had the veterans were there, Kiwanis. Rebecca and Oddfellows came, Museum was there, Sawdusters was there, the Chamber was there. Library, I got you right? I did, I was, my little thing here.
There wasn't room for us at Kokil table.
I was, I was going to say that the Kokil, well, the Coos County Library had an excellent table out there, and your, one of your librarians were, was out there, I forget what her name is, but they gave books away, tons and tons.
Children's books and adult books.
And adult books, yes, it was really, really bad, nice little baggies and book bags. I think I got two book bags, and it was really, really wonderful. And then on your comment with the Blue Zone, just to let you know that the Chamber of Commerce did buy the letter of support to Florence in supporting that project, so I really hope we get to move forward on that. That's it.
All right, thank you very much.
I've got thirty minutes, right? Second interruption.
All right, consent calendar, agenda made, is there a motion to adopt a consent calendar?
I make a motion to adopt a consent.
Council supposedly made a motion, council gave our seconds discussion. Hearing none, then all those in favor of adopting a consent calendar, say aye, aye. Opposed? Notion passed. All right, agenda nine, mayor and council appointment of the city, appointment of the city recorder. All right, now, I would recommend that we appoint Chuck Duffner, city recorder. Is there a motion with that effect?
I move, we appoint Chuck Duffner, city recorder, Kokil city recorder.
I'll second it.
All right, councilor Grant made the motion, and councilor Feller was the early first of that. And so, discussion. Hearing none, then all those in favor of the appointment, say aye, aye. Opposed? Mr. Duffner has a new hat to wear, but it's an old hat, I'm sure he'll enjoy it. All right, now, this part is, I conferred with Ben, and this part's strictly me. For the rare time where we need pro temps, I will appoint, as city recorder pro tem, we get the names right here, Melissa Henderson and Jennifer Stoltz, in the time when Chuck needs them to fill in in his absence. All right, we will move on to agenda item eleven.
Do you need to make a motion?
I checked with Ben on that, he doesn't believe we need a motion on that, because it's strictly pro tem. All right, and especially because there's no fiscal impact on this. All right, let's move on to agenda item eleven, resolution fourteen dash twenty sixteen. A resolution on mending the license permits and procedures book and adopting, adopting parking violation rates for the city of Kokil and authorizing the fees contained therein. Do you want to talk about this chief, or do you want to go to Ben on this? I know we have a procedure in the packet, but I don't know if you want to, who wants to comment first?
No, of course. Is it really July nineteenth, two thousand and ten?
No, it was adopted then, and it was written then and never adopted, right? Ben, we talked to.
Correct, that's right. It, it was adopted, voted on at that council meeting in two thousand and ten, but it was never implemented, never recorded, never.
Signed.
I think I was sleeping through that.
Okay, we're correcting that, that's why this is a bit of housekeeping.
Go ahead.
All right, Ben, do you want to talk about this at all, but like I said, it's housekeeping.
Right, we just want to just get it updated and get it done.
All right, Ben, is there a motion to adopt resolution fourteen dash twenty sixteen?
I make a.
I have a question.
Okay, let's get the motion on the table, then we'll do the other question.
I make a motion that we adopt resolution one four dash two zero one six, resolution on mending of licensing permits and procedures in books adopting parking.
resolution on mending of licensing permits and procedures and books adopting parking violations rates in the city of Kokil.
Remember, one of the choices of resolutions is we don't have to...
I know.
All right, Councilor Powell's made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Councilor K. Park seconds, okay, Councilor, sure.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry.
Last time we had this, if I remember, perhaps it was in 10, part of the problem was just that, one of the reasons far as the parking is concerned, is that some of that, we didn't want the people that worked downtown to be parking downtown because they're taking the places of the people who want to come and visit, and I remember that was one of our big issues. And then we had a couple of the people in town who actually work downtown were very, you know, very vocal about why we didn't have enough parking places around, so where are they supposed to park, and then they're, you know, they're not in good condition and all that type of stuff. And so, part of this is kind of went by the wayside, so I'm hoping that. And also, too, I know somebody moved downtown to one of the buildings and bought it about this time, and we had a sign up, and she asked about it, and they said, no, 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 they never enforce it. But all of a sudden, someone came around and gave her a ticket, and she said, no, wait, I'm gonna have to car. And she said, no, wait, I was told nobody, and it's, oh, yeah. So, I'm hoping that if we want, when we do this, it will be, people will understand it, people will know it, and we will follow through because as a way of doing it and not following through with everybody and having a place, you know, having enough parking places, that was what the problem last time, was that, some of the downtown people didn't feel they had enough parking places.
It could be a budget in the pay.
And it also could be in our little bulk of things downtown, you know?
Kathy, you wanted to say something?
Can I could please, on the parking, because by the Sodestas Theater,